Mr. Miskowski.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Garber.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Chairman Haggins.
Here. If I get you to rise for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country in a moment of silence in memory of Guinness Moore, just Moore's brother, as we all said.
Thank you. I put a belief in the city flag of the United States of America. It's a beautiful colored, which is standing one nation under God and invisible, that is being judged or wrong.
Billy, everybody, if you have an adoption, not in the photo of the meeting.
So.
Second.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Haggins.
Hi. And before we start the next, you have the. It's on this.
It's a policy of the board that its meetings be conducted at the highest degree of order and decorum. The board's integrity and dignity will be established and maintained at all times during the conduct of public business. And the board will commit no behavior which is not in keeping with this policy. Facility soliciting funds for meeting attendees for use of threatening or profane language. The failure to comply with time limits, violation of board rules, or other forms of disruptive conduct will not be tolerated. The chair will maintain proper order at all times during all meetings of the board and shall affect the removal from any meeting of any person guilty of improper conduct if any party fails or refuses to cease such conduct. Speakers wishing to address the board shall clearly state their name. All comments are addressed to the chair. Speakers may address only those matters within the scope of the board's authority. Speakers are allowed one opportunity of three minutes and may not yield any portion of their time to another. Political campaigning, advertising of goods and/or services, and the like are prohibited. No speaker is to engage in political statements, personal attacks upon members of the board supervisors, absentee employees, or officials, or any other person. No speaker is to use abusive language, discuss matters outside of purview of the board, or publicly discuss matters the board has solely considered in a closed meeting. Clearly state your position, give the facts to substantiate your position, and state the concerns you wish the board supervisor to concern. If you have a written statement or handouts or other supporting material handed to a clerk, do not hand materials to individual supervisors. Did everybody who wanted to finally pop get a chance to find out? Okay, guys, yeah.
All right, now we'll open the citizens' comment period in one. Oh, I'll fill it.
Um, first one was Jessica McLean.
You had it.
Yeah. That's my first. Good evening, board. Mr. Moore condolences to your brother.
Thank you.
My name is Jessica McLean, Baker Hick. Things King William residents said they wanted more than a library, pharmacy, restaurant toilets, outdoor recreation opportunities, internet, small businesses, rural field, armland, better schools, emergency services, and government, and lower taxes. Library barely registered on the list of results. It will eventually be revealed who's actually proflaming from this project because it's certainly not the people of King William. In the meantime, I suggest you tell your architects not to waste too much ink. Final point, you instructed recently that we are not allowed to comment our views on the construction of the project during the upcoming community meetings. I suggest you move this direction from your public notice immediately as it is viewpoint discrimination in violation of First Amendment's protection of free speech relative to public forums. You didn't dare risk, consider risking infringement of free speech of a library. So I suggest you do the same for public forums. Finally, thank you. Thank you, board, for allowing King William to see clearly with each one of these passing crimes and insults why they will be voting for change in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Garth Wright.
Billy, my name is Brian Garth Wright. I live at 55 Wind Drive, S.A., Virginia, 55 Wind Drive, S.A., Virginia. And, um. I'm nearly to the handicap game. Um, I saw an email on Facebook, or on the constitutional KW on Facebook. Found out if you want to challenge the government, y'all have some fans out there. You have some people that are really backing for it, uh, to learn a little something. Um, but I saw an email on Facebook, lady was talking to the director of the library, Mr. Schuck, about ADA. And basically he said, we don't own the building, it's not our responsibility. There's a copy of that email in the envelope that I had sent along with two pictures. Um, so I decided I'll be in the chair and write down, see what's on. I asked the lady, could I go inspect the exit, um, for ADA? And she told me, no, that's not handicapped itself. I said, well, ma'am, look this by where I go, where's my place of reference? And she said, oh, you gotta go in the front where the, uh, the ramp is. And I said, well, books burn. If the books are burning in the front, do I gotta go through the barn? And she got a puzzle book on her face, gave me a card, said, call us later. So I'm kind of curious. Mr. Schuck is saying that y'all approved the, uh, you know, the move in, so it's gotta be right. And I'm thinking, if there's a fire, what's gonna happen? Everybody else is gonna go out in the back. I don't have a place of reference. I'm gonna have to go up front. I'm confused. They've done excellent job of providing, uh, a bathroom and all the other things that they're supposed to to come up with, but kind of possible about the, uh, about the back door. And so I'm getting, thank you very much, Mr.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker, can we find out about that? I know we don't know the building. I don't know who at this point in the building, you know, exactly at one point. None of the citizens are not, but.
It's a property.
Mary Sue Bankrott.
Hey, Mary Sue Bankrott, District of Lit. I was going to convey that I was downbound, but then that included on the county calendar regarding the upcoming community meetings to discuss a community slash library design whereby it states. This is not a time to express opinions on whether a facility should be built. And let me just tell you, not is in all capitals, it is underlined, and it is in bold. Now, in fact, upon the fall on this, it falls right to the precedence the citizens of this county have become accustomed to for almost four years by this board. When was the time to express opinions on whether a facility should be built? Did I miss that communication? Were there also three meetings to discuss that? Is there a code that states the public cannot express their opinions? I don't think so. Seems all citizens missed it as well. This type of bamboozling is not appreciated by the citizens. I'd go so far to equate it to that of being like a parent telling their child. There'll be no discussion about this. You will do as I say. Except the taxpaying citizens of King Williams are not children. But this type of action by the board continues and seems to follow in the years, no matter how many times brought to their attention. I understand, help but wonder, when do the needs of the citizens come before the wants of this board? This also begs the question, why the rush on this? Let's face it, there are only five months left, and one's likely the last of the majority of the current board members, if not all the board members. $368,050 is no small amount for an architect company to be paid by a small county like King William. And the citizens have absolutely no input. What's the matter? I encourage all citizens to engage and get to know all the people running for board supervisors, especially the non-incumbent ones for November 7th, 2023. All emails have been made public, and I think the citizens are eager to communicate. But I have, without a doubt, no. We can do better for King William. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more call if anybody would still like to come forward. Then I'll close the comment here. Gentlemen, here we go. You've looked over the consent agenda. Any changes, corrections?
Mr. Chairman, approval of the concessions.
So. Any discussion? Chris.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Haggins.
Hi. Recent text and update on new laws, which took back July 1st, 2023. You guys don't like me to set the dice or give that one up?
But Mr. Chairman, are these ready?
It's like a few laws that were highlighted within the Baker, let me say, summary for you all that. Full document is available, type of links in the summary. Put your packets, or I should say that Chris generously put in the packet. Can go through a couple of them, um, but not all, and certainly not in detail. Uh, just want to bring you to your attention. One is the change in advertising requirements for public hearing notices. This is going to be an ongoing effort over the next few general assembly sessions. Fortunately, the publication scheduled for Kingland County is compliant currently with the new state code language. So for the most part, you all will not need to make any efforts to comply with that language. There were a few stormwater and erosion and sediment control changes. The most notable is that there have been some new, this new statutory language and regulations that have had an indeterminate effect of date. The General Assembly said they will be effective July 1, 24, and that will be to combine the erosion, sediment control, and stormwater management program. So that's gonna be, um, I think, really helpful for lots of localities, definitely to keep on your radar for next July. Then similarly, they expanded the agreement in lieu. Option for certain farm structures, so that reduces the requirements for certain agricultural activities and stormwater plans that are required for those. So you may see some different plans coming in. Also, in the agricultural lands arena, there are now prohibition on foreign adversaries owning agricultural land in the Commonwealth. I noted that for you because there is a process by which the locality improvements can, if it becomes aware of foreign adversary ownership, file a petition essentially quiet title. So very unlikely that will happen, but wanted to bring it to your attention. There are a few changes, uh, chapter 715 and 733 relating to the Department of Housing and Community Development's new comprehensive statewide housing needs assessment. That's going to require annual reporting from the county. So I just wanted you to be aware that certain actions taken by this board will have to be summarized by staff and provided to CP and. A couple of comprehensive plan, um, related issues, chapters 353 and 424. Essentially, the General Assembly has said comprehensive plans are now encouraged, but unmandated to address pandemic type situation. So all the county should be looking at that on a comprehensive basis. Um, and that requires, if building a transportation plan, that you include break corridors when looking at this. Chapter 436 extends to 2025, the sunset date for certain land use approvals. Just wanted to make you aware of that. The automatic extension does not apply to things that expire pre-2020, previous sunset date.
So that would be, for example, condition, conditionally used permit, such as, like, a sweet sewage. I think that was extended two years.
Correct. That would be, that would fall within a, if there are the time requirement within the conditional use permit. To that aspect, that would, the ECU would not be nullified by them not complying with that. There are requirements for, um, certain bonding, you know, bonding has to stay in place, there are criteria that need to be met, but. There's a new cause of action, um, related to zoning enforcement. Not something that the county needs to be worried about, but, um, something that it needs to consider, you know, taking zoning enforcement. There are some new business license application requirements. I just wanted to note, um, to exist with any amendments to the ordinance that staff and commission revenue might need to make. And there are a couple requirements of the general registrar now to public notice related to motor registration. All of the parts you made available, the alt explaining how FOIA charges are charged and assessed. Practically, that has already been done for Kingland County, so you guys have checked that box. And it's a little bit easier to, uh, buy and install playground equipment now. That can be done through clocking vertically. So in the event that there are any upgrades needed for pool or park facilities, that will hopefully be a little bit less of a cost. I'm happy to answer any questions. You'll have the legislation I provided in the summary or.
Now, in addition to, in addition to these, um, you know, the landscape of the General Assembly is going to be, um, vastly changed when they start setting in 2024, regardless of how, you know, certain final elections turn out. We've got so many retirements, uh, so many primary, uh, you know, with the redistricting, some surprise primary losses. Uh, so even, even the leadership of there is going to be different. Um, and that's gonna be new for the first time in a long time to the General Assembly. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be wild up there next year. So good luck with that. I heard it's gonna be a whole new world, um, which, exciting, right? Shake things up, but certainly it's gonna be a little near the.
Mr. Brown, very quick. Well.
No, he mentioned, yeah.
Uh, 796, selling, selling property to foreign adversary. Is it such a thing as dual citizenship?
So these, this restriction applies to property being owned by the government itself. The only individual is Nicholas Maduro. So he is the one named person who is not allowed to own agricultural property in Commonwealth.
Steve, good evening. Thank you, sir. They still listen. M A D U R.
Do you gotta get checks in businesses?
No, I just want to say that this guy's all about. Mr. Andrew, I think you're up next. Resolution 23 dash 53.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Notice the board hates the gentleman. Tonight, we have a request from economic development authority to carry over their FY 23 remaining balance, uh, $29,040 to move into the FY 24 budget. Typically, uh, funds that are retired at the end of a budget year move back into the general fund for reappropriation by the, uh, by the board supervisors when requested. Uh, the EDA would like to have this, uh, have this money, uh, at their, uh, opportunity to market. Uh, various things that may be coming up in the next few months. Farmers market, one example, next spring. Property that potentially they may, uh, retain would be a good opportunity for them to, uh, be able to assist, uh, in marketing effort there. And, uh, anything else from, uh, that may not be covered in their regular budget. An additional conference, uh, you know, there'd be a number of things. So they've asked that the board would give consideration to, uh, to carry the fund over. And that's your resolution, please.
No, I just do. I don't have a problem with it. Now, I'll move approval of the resolution this turn.
I'll say. Any further?
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Haggins.
Hi. Really, now, sure, you have a discussion of especially called joint work session on planning permission for all the.
The planning permission has been working on a few changes, um, to the ordinance. Um, trying to make it clear, um, and there were a few things that were left out or need to be changed. Um, so then I can have a work session with you, um, on the 21st to go over these changes. Just a few, it's not too many. Uh, they want to talk about the minimum site and area, um, dimensional regulations. And basically what we're looking at is just adding some verbiage in there under the family division where the three acres is now permitted under family division. But to add that the parent tract must be five acres because it's not clear to some people that is what is intended in the ordinance, but just to make it a little more clear. Um, also the boundaries, which is, uh, the measurement on 30 and 360 on where to take the measurement from. I'm trying to work at, um, some wording for that. Uh, change to the building exteriors, and that's in the TCO. Um, some of the, the wording has been changed on that. Um, the use matrix is to, uh, add, uh, daycare center, uh, is permitted with the CUP, um, and religious buildings. Um, a few changes to short-term rentals. Uh, another thing with that is it's permitted by right in the AC. Um, but it's permitted with the CUP approval and the RR and the R1. Uh, to change it to be permitted with the CUP and all three of the districts.
You have all those items celebrating.
This is just a road break of what they're gonna go over. Um, I'm finalizing a full list of everything for them, uh, to take a look at. We have a meeting on the 10th. Um, and then as soon as they finish with what they're proposing, uh, then we will make sure that you get it in plenty of time before the book session on the 21st. Yeah. Um, so a couple of things, the buffers, I think we were gonna do that to phase two and not go over that. Um, minor subdivisions, it was just, um, some wording on the entrances where we only allowed one entrance, uh, have a shared entrance for two lots on secondary roads, that still only have one entrance on the primary roads. Um, and some changes in those ending definitions. And we're also looking at the CUP reserving preliminary site plan requirements and just a few changes to, um, to be careful. That's about it for this one.
Do we, do we actually name it something?
Maybe, because that's my question. Does it need to be a standalone meeting? You can not do this in conjunction with a work session on 14th to the regular meeting on the 28th.
We may have to work session to do a public hearing or just do it all open?
Well, right, we're adding a meeting is what we're doing. And I think Stuart and I are wondering, do we need to add a whole of the meeting to our calendar? Can we combine this work with another one of the already scheduled meetings, Rob?
I've actually had that question more than just to.
I've got it as the 14th and 28th.
I'll do that. Mr. Chairman, I would suggest if you do that, it would be the 28th meeting and not the 14th. There's some other hearings on the 14th and some other.
Well, again, I know it's a volume of stuff, so I'm gonna put you guys as much as from sharing what, you know, what the meeting was like, certainly none of us want to be here until.
The reason, the reason, the reason we chose the separate pie is because we felt like this might run into length. And to have it, uh, with other meetings, with other, uh, agenda item or another meeting night, it would make for a pretty long night for everyone.
All right. Well, would that mean the case? And I'd be, I'd be at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, that was my question. You know, I didn't know how long this might take. I didn't know what we had scheduled for those other two meetings. Well, the 28th would be the best one if you wanted to combine it with what you've already said. The 14th, I would encourage not to because of the way that the, uh, the agenda items have come from previous meetings that are following that night.
Right. Well, I mean, just based on this discussion here, I think, I think you've convinced me it's probably worth adding a meeting. Much as I listed.
Keep it for the 21st.
That's my point.
There's a grand, you, you wanna make sure that everything is ready to go.
Yep.
Before we.
I wish everything for the planning commission ready by the end of this week, if not not. Um, and then whatever changes that they make to it at the 10th right afterwards, I will make sure that I get that to Chris, so she can get that out to you, for you.
No, we love to see the rationale behind the changes.
It's really not that many, but it is just some wording to make, um, the ordinance a little more clarified.
You've got enough. Great. And then the next one is you got a 368 arterial management panel you're up in here.
This is just some information. Um, so we have RKMK working with the GAT on the 368 quarter aerial arterial management program. Um, they're doing some analysis, um, and this is from Hanover County and King William County line with the intersection around 619 and Exits County. Um, they're doing the study. They do have a kickoff meeting on the 2nd. Um, I will not be available for that meeting. I think Mr. Haggins is gonna try to attend. Okay, and they are also willing to meet with me and some other people that aren't able to meet the, um, on the 2nd. They, um, after that, they will have a presentation that will be available to us, uh, to give you as well. Um, with this, uh, they're, they're looking at, um, some safety and enhancement. Uh, trying to be in line, uh, traffic that is served. With this, um, it is a voluntary, um, program and developed in partnership with the localities. And they, BNOT will work closely with the localities to plan for infrastructure that will support future land use and development.
With hoping Mr. Hudgens is gonna be very important to share the topic.
Yeah. So, um, after the second, I'll have a little more information for you. But just wanted to bring it up ahead of time, so you know that they are working on a study at this time.
Now, this round, who does RKMK hope to be on?
BNOT hired them to do the study.
Anything else? Thank you. For the tower, a little bit of discussion. I've already answered it.
Um, this is kind of where we're at when there's design plays in the tower. Uh, each of these part is one demonstration of the other grid, but I'm looking to. What the board recommends and how you wanna handle it, we don't necessarily have to have a logo. Um, we already have one, of course, the, this big garage. Um, they thought this would be a finalized for the reconstruction, um, so. It's our thought that if we're gonna do this, let's do it now before construction, everything begins. Um, even though it's one of the latter parts that happened for the tower, it would be the last thing that happens. Um, painting outside of the tape located, uh, without a logo, that's estimated about a hundred thousand dollars, that's just the bulk of the tape. Standard color primer paint. Um, added logo, depending on complex, you know, we'll be dealing with it, I mean, skies, maybe you ever wanted to, people see all kinds of cool stuff, but they like it, I get it. Um, but it can get expensive, they work for ten, fifty thousand dollars actually on top, so. That, knowing that towers do have to be repainted every fifteen to twenty years. So it's gonna be expensive, we're gonna have to keep our maintenance and that planning for our future stuff. Uh, well, add this, I didn't put it in here, uh, in the design of the tower, there are four conduits going up to the top. Where we can advertise for possible horizon use or whatever else, I don't know if it's have animal or if it's still being used still, but. It is something that we could use as income revenue, we did go that route to keep the maintenance of the tower done. So that's, there's, well, I don't know.
We're talking about conduits similar to the, like, some of the, inside.
Yes, the inside, so if they want to run a cable wire, it'd be very easy to do. Uh, we don't have any suitors yet, it hasn't been advertised, but we have that, I don't even know. From what I understood in our last meeting, they've gotta be in the right location. So. That'd be something we'd have to reach out to, so people have a horizon, they want to look at this connection, that, put that out there. But as far as maybe is just doing one dual logo. Having achieved it.
So here, here's where I would be on it, this is just, just my one opinion is, um. Um, you know, I'm much more comfortable with, with ten thousand dollar number than we would be with fifty thousand dollar number, I think, and I think. Probably, uh, you know. Simple and clean while still being attractive is probably what we would, we would want, same kind of thing, we would want something on there that's a section of the board or that we're, that we're already talking about making some investments to make it more attractive. To try to bring more attention to the opportunities that we have out there for, for investment and making that an opportunity, so. I, I would support having it. I would just say, um, you know. Again, clean and simple, while still being attractive, it doesn't have to be, um. A showstopper.
Well, that's the next question. Leaving the office at the side of the green and happy with that. Could we maybe have, have some input and maybe have a bridge or witnesses and find out which. How much each one of those individual children's costs?
Absolutely. There was also the design for a county logo was being a competition down now, correct? So depending on how that comes back, if that's acceptable, within the price range, we'll do that when that comes.
Right.
So anything is just getting this on the radar, um. The bid for this probably gonna be going out, took it before the end of August, um. But I know we're probably a time crunch to try to come up with something that quickly, but we do have to work on the project, probably work on that and adjust the cost, but we'll get to that one.
Not much of the logo we have now, this is generic logo would be, or I'm sure the price has gone up a little.
Only thing that I can compare to is the tower that we have now. We should be repainted once this new tower goes to service, and the last cost price we got on that for, that was two years ago, about a hundred twenty-eight thousand, a hundred twenty to a hundred thirty thousand dollars. That was two years ago, right? And right now, we can't do the painting, cause painting also involves the inside of tape that requires to be great. So that's what we're at about.
I would say at the very moment, Kingland County and maybe the web just didn't see that here. And then some later date. Once we finish with the new flash, we'll be calling it, just to consider. And we could keep some.
That's the thing, once you, once you even begin this thing out, if you want to come back out of there, it's a, it's a construction. We can still come back later, as well, it's a lot of cost, can it be a detail?
That, that's my question here, that was saying, cause I drive by this thing all the time, this is the tower that, um. For Weir Creek in New Kent, which is pretty close to me. And it's a, you know, it's a pretty complex, multi-color, it's got their, you know, logo, their economic development logo on it, and it's, I would have to imagine that's not done by hand.
I don't know, I haven't seen it, um, I can look at the options for that. But I've, everything that I've ever seen with the two towers, three gallon tanks that I've been involved with, over just a few, the one we painted, they've been, they might deal with it. Those are two big gallon tanks, right, just with basic gray. They already had ten on the tanks that got a logo on it somewhere else in the county, so, you know, um.
And this one, it's worth mentioning that this is gonna be pretty close to, you know, the, the gateway end, you know, from.
Yeah. I don't know, it's, I'm pretty sure it's be able to see it on top of it, I don't know with the site view.
Well, that might be something to take into consideration, too.
And I might be able to get going with the elevations, maybe to give projector, a road view of the tower that they've got there. So. So, I don't know, was it visible from as soon as you came into Kingland? Okay. But that's how much we can get you off to.
More information about that, but worth considering.
I think a detail in the future could cause problems. You know, they, you know, they will degrade and. It's kind of like putting a. License sticker on the, on top of another license sticker, you know, if, if it ever degraded to a point, then that would have to be invented.
But our logo was incredibly complex to have that painted. And do we know for sure that it is not painted?
I don't, we can, you know, somebody can call, right?
Yeah, find out.
Right.
I mean, I, I can, I can make a phone call on this problem.
But I mean, I know it's been standard with that logo, once they came out with that logo, which was at least ten years ago. It's been on that thing.
Okay.
I don't know if it's been replaced.
Do y'all want to set a time when, when we come back to revisit this?
Well, the contest for the, what are we calling this?
Logo.
Logo. The contest ends August thirty first, so we don't have a winner. If we want to vote, we already paid off, so. Do we wait till after that, then we come back and address it?
Okay, like I said, just start bringing it up, you know, looking at it, and even I'll let Bowman know this week that we are entertaining a logo, we just.
Right.
And I'll find out what the absolute deadline is during construction that we can even let them know something.
Anything else? No, but this lowest price too, like they were kind of supposed to be trying to save citizens money, not keep spending all the money.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County has created a report, it's been, uh, fact, it's been, uh, I think amended, we want to thank. It's branch and, uh, back in here, they, they got together, so put a lot of this information together by, last week. I did want to cover a couple, uh, meetings that are, and dates that are, that are coming up in, here in their future. The Virginia two fifty planning committee that was appointed by this board. They will meet on Thursday at four thirty, uh, in here in the boardroom. Uh, that's a, that's a meeting that's open to the public. And it was already mentioned during the citizen's comment that the community meeting, uh, to discuss use this for the new community center. Uh, that will be, uh, at seven o'clock, so that will follow the, uh. The two fifth and planning committee, uh, that meeting, uh, again at seven o'clock here at the boardroom. Also want to, uh, remind everyone that active night out activities will be taking place this year, and there'll be two locations in the county. The traditional one is at the Kingway Work and Club on Tuesday, August the first. Starts at four o'clock, uh, in somewhere around seven. And then the second one is a brand new, uh, uh, location, that's in County West Point. It's at the town park, and it will be, uh, provided at night, uh, PM, uh, that, that evening. So we encourage residents to get out, there'll be a number of, uh, public safety personnel and. Uh, other government and, uh, and off the profit.
That, that is between eighth and ninth, uh, main and curve.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just a couple, uh, other notes, um. Big, uh, big kudos to our IP department, as you know, like we struck, uh. The roof of the historical building a couple of Saturdays back, and. That's led to a, uh, a gambit of issues that we've had to overcome. The bigger one was the, uh, the loss of our, entire loss of our own system. So we were able to get, uh, a replacement in rather quickly. And, uh, IP, uh, personnel. Were endlessly day and night to try to install, uh, to make sure our offices were not. Without those services that as long as they could, we were out most of the week. Uh, week before last, but now it's, or last week because, and now it's been restored. And, uh. We, we appreciate that, we, uh, have our insurance company looking at the damage, uh, we would anticipate that there'll be. A claim has been filed, we will anticipate there'll be somebody with first, uh, back to the county, uh, on, on that. We'll remind you that we have still had problems getting, uh. The social services advisory board to meet with a quorum. And we're lacking at least one member, uh, that will complete that, if that too, that would be better. So you know of any of your constituents that would want to serve in that capacity of critical work force, it, uh. It needs to fall into place since we changed the model of, uh, of operation a year ago. And that is one of the mandates that the state requires, that you have a, an advisory board. To help, uh, be in link with the community and the social services program. So, uh, anyone who's interested, please, uh, contact county administration, there's an application on our website as well. They meet, uh. Uh, not every month, uh. Maybe, uh, every couple of months, and they also allow. It's usually an early evening meeting, if people are out late, if that's a, if that's an issue with them as well, so, uh. We encourage that. And there's also a back-to-school supply drive that we're trying to get the entire community involved with, um. County employees that pledge to fill thirty back tax. For students ages pre-candidate through twelve. And, uh, anyone wanting to participate and view and purchase, uh, at the Amazon wishlist. For drop-off items at the county admin ability and for its station one, uh, yeah. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, you have the remainder of our reported, your packet, your letters and, uh. And, uh, reports that are from various agencies and departments. Have been trying to enter those, uh, you know, closing.
Not yet, we're still no testing, but it is been done.
One thing I did fail to mention that was the last, uh, addition is that we are replacing much of the brick around, around the, uh.
I don't understand what the other day.
The day, well, just, you know, you know, the old brick that chipped off, Steve, you wanna go in more detail about it?
It was in very bad shape, yeah, especially around the lights. Uh, the brick half column, columnades were just falling apart, falling off. Uh, so it's repointing of areas that need to be repointing, rebuilding the lights and, uh, really a little bit more on the walkways, that we're also showing a lot of damage.
Exciting, most, most of the supervisors coming in, Steve. Strange, some of the comments that we heard in the public comment here were. People being told not to say certain things, so that's the first I've heard of, I'm surprised I hadn't gotten email. But if we can maybe look into that to make sure it does sound like we're not supposed to do that, and then, and then, um. I noticed that the. Transfer station for the waste is really nice, so, but then. I've already heard complaints about that too, because I thought when they built it, they were gonna put the. Containers lower so that like one up here, so that people could drive by and drop it, and the people say that they're up high and they can't throw, lift their trash cans up that high and get them to dump over, so. I don't know, I'm sure there's something we can do about it now, but that's, you know, the complaints I've heard multiple times already. Loop around is a lot better, and there's no backups that I've seen, so that's a great success. Oh, and I said, and that internet, internet, if we can still have, maybe, I know, I, I need to get a travesty of that person's context, I'll, I'll make the scenes.
I've asked, uh, we're scheduling a meeting with Tom Minus that was on there, and you to drill down into areas like yours.
Okay, and thanks everybody for coming to us, apparently he's, he's a crowd, so that's good, thanks everybody for coming.
Well, that was tonight, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, to you, take a minute, you mentioned it in the work session, but, uh. Dedicated to the memory of Jim Hudson, um, the mayor, longtime mayor of West Point, recently passed away, he was, um. He was a, uh, a, a good friend of mine, um. When we first moved back to town, uh, you heard that my wife was trying to find a job in the middle of the O R section. He had somebody going on bed rest for a difficult pregnancy and hired her to work for him for a few months, and we got to know him really well during that time. Um, just even outside of his, his years of service to the town, he was a good man, um, someone worth, uh, worth looking out to, and was a, was a wonderful mentor to me. For all the years that I knew and sort of miss.
I would like to thank everybody for coming first, all the most. Mr. Moore, my condolences to you for the loss of Dennis. I remember him well. Uh, I'd also like to thank Sylvia Watkins for the phone call today regarding, uh, Newcastle Road. Potential for a future project there. And also, uh, Mr. Thomas Call, and also on Newcastle Road. Different issue altogether, but, uh, we're trying to get that straight to you. It's good when people get involved, let us know that they, that they can. Uh, that's pretty much it, but once again, Ed, I'm sorry.
I wanted to emphasize, Mr. Asher had mentioned the national night out at the Rockin Club, it is focused on children, kids, so please bring your grandkids, bring your kids. We've got a lot of activities going on that evening, should be a great event. And I just wanted to, uh. Note on Saturday, there was a, uh, an outstanding community support from literally all of the state. For Mr. Justin Spurlock, who put together a car show at the metal park. The place was packed, his hand was there. And, uh, I would say over three hundred vehicles, vendors, uh, volunteers. It was incredible, and he's trying to build himself an ADA compliant home, he is. Auto mechanic. And, uh, it's amazing what this young man can do with his disabilities, but it was an exciting event.
I thank everybody for coming and we just had the uh Friday night food crust at West Point, and during that week, they had a dunking for the town manager, the fire chief, and the police chief. If they, the police chief won, only not only the most money collected, I think it was I think I got it right, thirteen hundred and twenty-four dollars was collected. And uh it was it was a great event, and even though Chief Spencer didn't win, they told him, he was dumped the most. But anyway, I just want to mention one thing, Mr. Garber uh and I and Mr. Ashcrack, we're discussing, and it's gonna be down the road, it'll probably be in twenty four. Um, of moving back to reconciliation to to the treasury office, but uh under her guidance and their and direction on the win. Uh and I just want to let everybody know that that's what we're looking at. And of course, I will take a vote to do that. I think it's, it's a good thing to do. And with that, I have nothing further to any motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to convene and close meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven eleven eighty-eight of the Code of Virginia to insult legal counsel on specific legal matter regarding the Department of Social Services requiring the resident legal advice by counsel. And in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven eleven eight one, Code of Virginia to consider a personnel matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions. Say.
New discussion.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
And Greenwood.
Aye.
For Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Chairman Haggis.
Aye.
We'll be back shortly.
Oh, let me back, Mr. Chair, I may be reconvened in open session, so.
Mr. Greenwood.
Uh.
Mr. Garber.
Uh.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Jim Haggis.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move as our one.
Mr. Garber.
Uh.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
And Haggis.
All right.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, uh move a resolution twenty-three dash fifty-four confirmation appointment to the municipal alliance board, whereas municipal alliance MPA plans to do monthly meetings has requested written confirmation of the Kingway County's representative on the MPA board. And whereas Evan H. Moore Jr. is currently serving in this position. Now therefore be resolved on the board supervisors of Kingway County, Virginia, that Evan H. Moore Jr. is appointed as the Kingway County representative on the MPA board ending December thirty first, twenty twenty-three, done this like with the of July twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Jim Haggis.
Hi, Mr. Moore, Chair, move your hands.
Hold on, Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Mr. Garber.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
There.
All right.